Buenas dan mananas, Sidos. Doncolona, Sidos Masini, ifinaten midu pagu na ogan para esti inekongoki publico, gini gi minaitan taidos na leistoran guahan. Gaginman pagun gi komiteani appropriations, public dead legal affairs, retirement, public parks, recreation, historic preservation and land. Itariata pagu na ogan tresa ngaprinuponi i bill number two fifty-nine, bill number two fifty-three, dan i bill number two forty-nine. Anifunenina ma nunche estina inekongoki publico, ma pega loke getarea i two sixty-five, lo mara, ma posponi esti para inekongoki, ah, estaki ma style information gumaha para esu naprinuponi. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome this morning to the Committee on Appropriations, Public Dead Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Lands, Committee Public Hearing. We are here this morning with an agenda with three items, bill two fifty-nine, two fifty-three, and two forty-nine. Bill number two sixty-five, originally announced as being heard this morning, has been postponed, and we'll announce that at a later date. We want to thank each and every one of you for your presence here this morning. And before we begin going right into our agenda, I would like to thank my colleagues who are here and have joined me this morning to assist us and the committee's work in this committee hearing. To my immediate right is Senator Tomada, to my left is Senator Frank Uggan Jr., Senator Chris Duñez, and Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Eli Nemeshita make up the panel on my left. We will go ahead and begin with two fifty-nine. Bill two fifty-nine is a bill that was introduced by myself, and it's a proposal that would try and deal with a longstanding issue of a family in Baragata whose property continues to be in the way of, basically, the collection of stormwater runoff during the villages during heavy rains. The family has been seeking a land exchange with the government of Guam. And what we are attempting to propose in this bill is that if, in fact, the property is needed to resolve some flooding issues within the village of Baragata, then we would require the Department of Public Works and its engineering department to certify that property needs to be taken for that purpose. And then, as required in public law, all land exchanges taken by the government for public benefit would be exchanged with a parcel that was set up for land exchanges up in Dedido. And so, this bill would put forth that proposal. I have signed up to testify on bill two fifty-nine. Mr. Dominguez, are you testifying? Anybody else that will be testifying on bill two fifty-five? Mr. Dave Camacho and staff from Land Management, please join us. We'll go ahead and begin receiving testimony in the order that the witnesses have testified. I have Mr. David Camacho, Ms. Margarita Borja, and Mr. Carl Dominguez. We'll go ahead and, Mr. Camacho, please identify yourself for the record and ensure that the red light is on by pushing the button on your microphone, and then we can proceed with the, your presentation.
David Camacho, acting director for Department of Land Management. Good morning, Mr. Chair and other senators. Buenas anhafade. Our department has reviewed bill two fifty-nine dash thirty-two, court for forcing to exchange a value property, a value-for-value basis privately-owned private property in Baragata for government of Guam-owned property located in Dedido, and provides the following findings and recommendations. Our finding indicates that the same tract of government land designated for the proposed exchange with the Spada family as also being authorized by law for other land exchanges that have not been finalized. Nearby, the department has no objection to the exchange, subject to the availability of land. Section two line item eighteen, which reads the following, lot number one zero one twenty, dash R sixteen, containing an area of plus or minus seventy acres, should be amended to read the following, a portion of tract one one four oh five, containing an area of two thousand, an area of two thousand eight hundred eighty-three, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-three, plus or minus square meter, or seventy, plus or minus acres, are described with a drawing reference map number three zero one F Y ninety-nine, and fourteen dash nine nine T six five two, recorded at the Department of Land Management as document number seven three eight one five eight. The department supports the approval of this bill, subject to the recommendation as mentioned above, and thus foresee a physical impact of ten thousand dollars for pressure calls and survey and mapping if required.
Thank you, Sidos Masie, Mr. Borja. Margarita, were you going to provide additional testimony or? Mr. Dominguez?
Buenas anhafade, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. I'm Carl Dominguez. I'm the director of the Department of Public Works. I'll just read my short testimony and answer any questions that you may have. Dear Senator Panglinen, bill two five-nine dash thirty-two tasks the Department of Public Works to, and I quote, "determine and issue a written certification attesting to the requirement that the privately-owned property described in subsection B below is required for flood mitigation and for public use as a ponding basin by the government of Guam." The subject property contains an area of approximately seventy acres. In designing ponding basins for stormwater runoff collection, the DPW requires its engineers and consultants to use its transportation stormwater drainage manual, and, Mr. Chairman, this is what it looks like, this is the manual, and take into consideration a number of factors, including topography, runoff coefficients, rainfall intensity charts, and infiltration rates. The requirements for a ponding basin or basins for this particular area of Baragata will take up to six months for our engineers and/or consultants to study and submit a report on. The engineering study may establish that not all seventy acres will be required to mitigate stormwater runoff in the surrounding area. Once determined, I will certify the requirement for public use of the subject property for ponding basin or basins to mitigate the flooding in the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. Mr. Palacan, Mr. Mayor, were you going to provide additional? No? Okay. Mr. Dominguez, I think you may have misread the bill. The property, the private property, contains an area of eleven thousand square meters. It's not part, the seventy acres is the property site that has been identified for exchanges. So, ah...
I misread it, then?
Yes.
I, I misread it, I, okay. So, it's eleven thousand square meters?
Yeah.
That would be roughly two and a half?
A hectare.
A hectare, yes.
Yeah, but a hectare. Little over a hectare.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll make a note of that.
All right. And so, again, the idea is that while the family has requested this land exchange over the years and have actually approached the legislature, we didn't want to just go take the property if we don't have to, because, you know, we would have to give up government property if we were going to do so. And so, that's why we decided to go this route, to do the engineering study and see whether or not that property is actually needed. And so, you're saying that it'll be, take about six months to perform? Now, given...
Up to, up to...
Up to six months.
Up to.
Okay.
We, we possibly could do it faster, but I just want it up to that timeframe.
Okay. All right. Senator Ada, did you have any questions? Senator Uggan? Senator Duñez?
Sure. I, this is for Land Management. Margarita, you, you guys continue to do land registrations at this time?
Ah, yes, we are.
And so, this would be unregistered government land?
Ah, no, it's not, actually. It's registered.
No, I know this one is, but you are capturing unregistered government lands still at this time, right?
Yes, we are.
Just wanted to put that on the record for, I know there are a number of mayors who have come to many different offices with regard to this issue, so it may be needed in the future, barring any other opportunities. And I guess I'll turn over to Public Works now. In terms of some of the work that was done by Parsons and other consultants, somewhat in relation to the buildup and the like with Public Works and Land Management, I understand there's quite a large sum of money that was identified for island-wide flood mitigation. Is that correct?
There was a study done in 2010, and my recollection is that the study determined, at that time, in those dollars, something in the order of a hundred and seventy million dollars to mitigate flooding around the island. And when they did the study, they, the consultants actually got together with all the mayors and, and asked them to identify their, you know, their worst flooding problems, and that was incorporated into the study.
Sure, and I wanted that on the record as well, because I want to publicly now thank your deputy, the former mayor of Baragata, that he, he provided that information and is quite comprehensive. And so, as we go forward, this discussion was with a lot of other mayors and other municipalities, the issue may be this arrangement, you know, while we accumulate the funds possible for that very, much larger project of stormwater drainage and flood mitigation, given that this is happening to a number of different families. And besides, I, I guess, one more question for Land Management. So, if we establish a larger bank and, and go down this road, we'll be swapping, but the government will still main, maintain the property that's exchanged for, yeah?
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to find out if there is a representative of the family that's in the audience today?
We, we, I received a call from the family. They're aware of the public hearing, and I thought they would be here this morning, but I don't see anybody at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator, okay. Well, thank you very much, Sidos Masie, ladies and gentlemen, for your presence this morning and for your presentation of the department's position on this proposal by this legislative body. Thank you, and the panel's dismissed. The next item on our agenda is bill number two five-three, a bill introduced by Senator Frank Diuggan Jr., an act to amend section three zero one one three of chapter thirty, title five, Guam Code annotated, relative to the exclusion of attorneys employed in the Department of Law who serves in the guard and/or reserve under title ten or title thirty-two of the U.S. Code. I have signed up, Mr. Michael Panglinen, Mr. Graham Bota, Mr. Mitch Thompson, and Mr. Philte Dinko from the Attorney General's Office. Gentlemen, if you're going to present oral testimony, please come forward to the witness table. But before you begin presenting your testimony, I'm going to ask the author of the legislation to give us a short synopsis of the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. Certainly, I would like to extend my appreciation to you for expediting the public hearing on this particular measure. Also, this is a direct result, this legislation is a direct result of recommendations that were forwarded by the Office of the Attorney General. And I believe the title is self-explanatory relative to the exclusion of attorneys employed in the Department of Law who serves in the guard and/or reserve under title ten or title thirty-two of the U.S. Code. I'd like to, Mr. Speaker, I think we're here more or less to, to listen to some of the comments and the testimonies that are going to be provided on this legislation, but I'd like to close by thanking you and Senator Tomada for your co-sponsorship of this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Uggan. Mr. Panglinen, we'll just start with you. Please identify yourself for the record, make sure the light's on, and then you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Panglinen, and I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, Senator Ada, Senator Uggan, Senator Ada, and Senator Nemeshita, this opportunity to present testimony in support of bill two fifty-three thirty-two, which amends the prohibition on outside law practice by assistant AGs contained within five G C A three zero one one three, and creates an exception to allow assistant AGs to serve as JAG officers in the National Guard and Reserves. As attorney, as an attorney in private practice on Guam for the past seventeen years, but more importantly as a member of our community and a resident of Guam, I strongly support bill two fifty-three. I'd like to start by thanking you, Mr. Chairman, and also Senators Frank Uggan and Tomada for introducing this bill. When a law like five G C A three zero one one three enacted with good intentions and an admirable purpose, turns out to have some unforeseen consequences that are harm, that are harmful to our community, I believe it is up to Guam's elected leaders to take action to fix this. And that's exactly what you have done by introducing bill two fifty-three. You recognize that while three zero one one three benefits our community by requiring attorneys at the AG's office to avoid outside professional commitments so that they may stay focused on their heavy government workload, and so that they may avoid potential conflicts of interest and divided loyalties, the law needs some minor adjustment in order to prevent punishing attorneys who choose to serve their island and their country as National Guardsmen and Reserves. All that is needed here is a minor tweak of the existing law to allow for National Guard and Reserve service, and that's all that bill two fifty-three does. It carves out from three zero one one three's blanket prohibition a very narrow military service exception, which is made even more narrow by requiring that JAG officer service must not conflict with the attorney's duties within the AG's office, and by further requiring that such JAG officer service be approved by the Attorney General. It's a minor adjustment to a well-intentioned law, but an adjustment that is badly needed so that we may encourage, not discourage, military service. And in order to, to prevent injustice and avoid dismantling the professional careers of men and women who have chosen to apply their legal training in the service of both our island and our community and our country, these men and women deserve to be honored and revered, not prosecuted and punished for their service. And again, I don't believe that that was ever the intention of the current law, five G C A three zero one one three. I won't pretend to be an objective and partial observer with respect to the effect of the existing law. My cousin John is a JAG officer and a captain in the Guam Army National Guard. He's not only my cousin, he's Nino to my youngest daughter. He's one of my closest friends. We even attended law school together. I can truthfully say that he is one of the most, if not the most honest, disciplined, law-abiding, and principled people that I have ever known. He has served our island well for many years as an assistant AG, successfully prosecuting numerous criminal cases during his career to make our island a safer place. A few years ago, John finally made the decision to realize his lifelong dream of joining the United States Armed Forces. It has definitely been the right decision for him, and I've never seen him so fulfilled and content with his life as he has been these last two years since joining the guard. The fact that there is a law on the books that could possibly be used as a basis to punish a person like John, who has done and continues to do so much to protect and serve our community, cries out for prompt action. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman and Senators, for recognizing this. There may be further minor adjustments needed to the language of bill two fifty-three to make it retroactive, to ensure that its scope is sufficient to protect assistant AGs like John who have unknowingly fallen within the purview of three zero one one three due to their guard or reserve service. In fact, John was actually sworn into the guard before the blanket prohibition in three zero one one three was even enacted. But I trust that, that these drafting points will be worked out as the bill moves through the process towards passage and enactment into law. Once again, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Senators, for doing the right thing by taking prompt action to pass this important bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Panglinen. Mr. Bota?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, Senators. I'd like to thank you for introducing the bill here and allowing the public testimony, to provide testimony in support of the bill. I'd like to state that I'm here in my personal capacity, but as many of the senators may know, I am a colonel in, in the Guam Air National Guard. And as such, I'm the senior, I guess, I D T, part-time attorney there, and as such, I do supervise the, both Captain Kwan, Major Perez, and Captain Leon Guerrero. I myself am a government attorney, and of course, I, I ensure that anything I do with regard to the, my practice of law, providing that for the National Guard does not conflict with my duties as a government attorney. Captain Leon Guerrero is an assistant U.S. Attorney. Previously, he was assistant AG. Major Perez, as, as you know, is a judge. We have ethnic rules that we're required to follow, both as a JAG and as a member of the Guam Bar, and as such, we ensure that there aren't conflicts. And if there are, we take steps necessary to wall off those attorneys, as would any law firm, to make sure that there aren't any conflicts, potential or otherwise, that would impact their obligations to do that. I think that the, the bill is written now, as, as the testimony has indicated, with a minor tweaking to care of the retroactive nature, should ensure that it's tailored carefully enough that the attorneys can still do their, their government function as a government lawyer, and as well not conflict with their, their, their job as a reserve or guard JAG. And with, with that, I think that should, that should take care of it. Obviously, the Attorney General is the supervisor of, of an assistant AG, or others will make sure that from that perspective, there are no conflicts. And I would expect that, the senators would expect either myself or Colonel David Riano, who is unfortunately off-island, as the senior, you know, supervisory attorneys, to make sure that the JAG attorneys do the same. And I, I think certainly, as the testimony has indicated, there was nothing that, that really was intended in the original law, but I think the amendments is made here would take care of any, any potential impacts to Captain Kwan or others who may be in that same position.
Thank you, Sidos Masie, Mr. Bota. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, committee members. My name is Mitch Thompson. I'm a attorney in private practice. And while I currently am chairman of the Guam Bar Ethics Committee, I'm here solely in a personal capacity, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee, but rather speaking on behalf of myself as a private citizen. I'd just like to say that I, I think that the proposed change to section thirty-one one three is necessary, and it's, it's, I'm glad that the legislature is taking it up. We've heard the reasons why the law, as originally written, was well-intentioned to focus the attorneys that work for the Attorney General's Office, who represent the people of Guam, to have them focus on representing the people of Guam. But again, the reasons for this minor tweaking of the law have been well-stated by the other panelists here. And I would just like to add one suggestion. There has been some concern raised about how section thirty-one one three was originally enacted. I think that one way of dealing with that concern is for the legislature, rather than simply just amending section thirty-one one three to repeal and then reenact the proposed amended section. And I think that would take care of that concern. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Thompson. Senator Uggan, did you have any questions for this man?
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your testimony this morning, and I appreciate that, that perspective in terms of the repeal and reenact. But can you just clarify exactly, from a legal perspective, what that implication may be?
Okay. And I am not a specialist as far as legislative law, so I, I hope I don't misstate it. But I, I think there was some concern in the way that section thirty-one one three was originally adopted. And the bill two fifty-three, as I read it, proposes to amend section thirty-one one three. And my suggestion, and again, I think, of course, the committee should double-check with legal counsel to make sure that I'm not opening up a can of worms here. But I think that one way of dealing with that concern would be to have the legislature, assuming that the proposed language of bill two fifty-three is, is acceptable, is to repeal the current section thirty-one one three and re-adopt and reenact the proposed bill in its place. And then that, I think, takes care of the concern about how section thirty-one one three was adopted in the first place.
I guess, into, I guess my question was more aligned in terms of, would that address a proposal or an idea about applying the provision retroactively?
Ah, that I'm not sure about. I'd have to defer to legislative counsel on that one.
I appreciate your testimony this morning, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
My question would be to Attorney Bota here. Would it be accurate to say that a lot of the legal work that the JAG officers do really more deal in the realm of the UCMJ? Or matters related to compliance with D O D regulations, and not so much with issues related to violations of Guam's civil law or criminal law?
That's, that's correct, Senator. And we do provide, you know, assistance for domestic cases and legal assistance in that terms. But we also, you know, being mindful of what their other obligations are and their other jobs are, we do screen those attorneys from that. Two of the attorneys, Major Perez and Captain Kwan, are members of the trial defense services. So generally, they provide, their, their services are generally limited to providing assistance to members that are charged with administrative thing or, or some, some violation under, under the Guam Code of Military Justice. And so, that's what their service is generally limited to. And, and then others, you know, may do briefings on U C R A, Service Member Civil Relief Act, and, and those issues as well. But we, we don't generally deal with any involving the government regulations, for the most part.
So, would it be accurate to say, then, that, for example, the work that an assistant AG does on a day-to-day basis is really pretty much separated and apart from the sort of legal issues, then, that, that JAG officer would deal with?
That would be correct, Senator.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Mr. Panglinen, or Graham, actually, I think is the one. You mentioned that Captain Leon Guerrero is an assistant U.S. Attorney.
That is correct. Formerly, he was assistant AG in the same office as Captain Kwan, and now he works for Lisa Libdiaco as an assistant U.S. Attorney.
In addition to his service?
That's correct.
I, I, can, can you, can, you know, I, I was looking at just the, the prohibitions on outside employment of U.S. Attorneys. And, and from my reading, I thought that, that there was a prohibition, that there was almost a blanket prohibition on the U.S. Attorneys even working for other federal agencies?
Well, Senator, that, that would be the case if it were anything other than, than a, to my understanding, a JAG reserve or guard service. I would note that, in fact, there's a senator in the United States that's also a colonel in the Air Force Reserve. He's an Air Force Reserve JAG. So, I think it's fairly limited to that, because obviously, they don't want to conflict with their duties as U.S. Attorney. And I would note that in some of the cases that we handle, he, he is conflicted from handling those cases, not because he handles them in the U.S. Attorney's Office, but because he works there. So, in, in cases involving O H A, for example, even though he doesn't handle those, the U.S. Attorney's Office is prosecuting that, so we don't allow him to provide any assistance or guidance regarding to the command regarding those cases.
Okay.
You know, it's not really a conflict because he doesn't work on them, but we want to make sure that there's no question to any of the folks that, that there could be a, a conflict there.
Could I ask you just for the, maybe just so that other members of the, the committee as well as the body, when we, when we report this bill out, could, could I ask you maybe to provide me with those guidelines on the U.S. Attorneys?
Yes.
And I would just amend the public records here, so.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Senator Duñez? Senator Ada? Senator Nemeshita?
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. Gentlemen, thank you for being with us this morning. I think my question, well, my question goes to you, Mr. Thompson, right? So, you said you were here as a private attorney and not necessarily representing the Ethics Committee of which you chair?
Yes, that's correct, Senator.
Yeah, and is there a particular reason why you can't make, you are not making a statement for the Ethics Committee?
Well, I, I suppose to represent the committee, you'd have to consult with all the members and talk about this, and whether or not the, I'm not sure that, that it, it's necessarily appropriate for, for that committee to make a public statement, one way or the other, on pending legis, pending legislation. And so, I felt it more appropriate for me to come down here and speak my own personal view.
Okay. But is your sense, though, that most in the bar would be supportive of this measure? Or is that, or you cannot say?
Senator, my gut sense is that I think that, that most people would realize that this is a sensible tweaking of an important piece of legislation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. This panel will be dismissed. Thank you for your time this morning. And then I have Mr. Philte Dinko and the Attorney General of Guam, Senator Leonard Ropales. Gentlemen? You may be.
Buenas anhafade. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Senators of the thirty-second Guam Legislature. Thank you, and we appreciate this time to, to speak on this, on this amendment. But I want to, before we get into the, my, my opinion about the amendment, I want to give, talk a little bit about the history of this bill, or the history of where we are. Prior history allowed, the prior law allowed assistant attorneys general to engage in the outside employment... the outside employment of, outside employment, not specifically employment in law, but so long as the employment did not conflict with their present duties, importantly, the Attorney General, the Assistant Attorney General had to seek written authorization from the AG. That presupposed that there was going to be vetting by the upper management that there are no conflicts. And you heard Attorney Bosa talk about conflicts. Attorneys are restricted many, many ways when it comes to conflicts. We are very sensitive to that, and a simple conflict can destroy our livelihoods. So we are very sensitive to that. So we are, we make sure that the conflicts that exist when we are representing clients, that there are no conflicts. And so what essentially happens is the employee does his own conflict check, but then he goes to, he or she goes to the Attorney General and supervisors to double vet this. And then at some point, it's a A and A. And I've been the beneficiary in my, when I was an Assistant, I've been the beneficiary and also was told not to work, do some outside work by the Attorney General. So I always vetted, and it worked. It was Assistant that worked. I know several Assistants presently who are in the past that have worked as professors at the University of Guam. I also know of a lot of, some Assistants who do pro bono work and also would like to do pro bono work. And present law could possibly change that. And Chief Deputy Tadinco will talk a little bit about that. In fact, he's put together an amendment to take care of those issues of teaching and pro bono work. Last July twenty-sixth, July twenty-sixth of last year, we'd wrote and sent the Speaker an opinion expressing several legal problems with five GCA thirty-one-one-three. Just briefly, I think it was discussed a little bit earlier about the inorganicity of the bill and where and when it was passed. That was one of the issues that we believed would cause it to have legal problems. And then there's the supremacy clause problem that we believe also infirms the statute. There are a couple other issues that don't necessarily apply to Captain Kwan here, but we did provide the legislature a full, a fairly complete discussion of our issues with the statute. And we could provide, you know, we could provide the panel and the committee with other copies of our opinion. We actually do have it, but we will also provide that. And while our office was discussing this last week, there was also, and this was something that we kind of thought of also, the potential equal protection challenges because, A, Assistant Attorneys General were singled out. What about other attorneys in the government? Their public defenders, alternate public defenders, judges? I mean, that was alluded to today. But frankly, our position was and still remains regarding this law, it's unenforceable based on the, I think there were four or five different legal infirmities. But we're here because of an interpretation of this present statute that even this body could not have envisioned. That is the prevention of one of my Assistant Attorneys General, who is proudly serving our people prosecuting criminals and keeping our streets and homes safe, preventing him from also proudly serving our nation. Now, he could not have meant that as an Assistant Attorney General, he could not also assist our men and women in uniform as they transition from Iraq, Afghanistan, or the Horn of Africa, back to Guam, back home. He could not have meant that he would have to choose between being an Assistant Attorney General in the office of the Attorney General or Captain in the Judge Advocate General's Corps. I will tell you, if he chose, one of our organizations would lose a valuable asset. While this amendment would clarify the issue of military service, and we also have, if the Senators aren't inclined to repeal the statute whole, as suggested by one of the Speakers, we do have a proposed amendment. I feel the better result would be to go back to the prior statute, where barring a conflict of interest, barring a disruption of the mission of the office, and having the express written authorization of the Attorney General, an employee of the Attorney General's office, any employee, staff, investigators, or lawyers, may engage in outside work. I think a question was asked about whether or not there were guidelines regarding Assistant United States Attorneys from being in the, serving as a guard member. I don't know if there's any, being the prior United States Attorney, I'm not certain if there is one. And if there isn't, we will also research that. But I do know that during my time as a United States Attorney, we've had several U.S. Attorneys deployed to go off to Iraq or Afghanistan. We've had several Assistant United States Attorneys nationwide go off and serve our country. And the Department of Justice did not lift a finger. In fact, the Department of Justice supports these men and women as they go into the line of fire. And sometimes when they're deployed, they're not, they don't leave, they are still in their home base, but they are technically deployed, but they are supported. In fact, the United States Attorney's Offices serve to help defend the service members when they come back from deployment and protect them under the offices of the USARA that we've been talking about. So I don't believe that there is a restriction so long as there isn't a conflict of interest with the member and so long as the mission of the United States Attorney's Office is not compromised, much like the prior statute that this statute amended. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney General. Mr. Tadinco, will you go to provide the direction?
Good morning, Chairman, Senator Spannelynn, Senator Uggins, Senator Frank Uggins, Senator Chris Spannelynn, Senator Tom Addison, Senator Yamashita, Phil Tadinco. Thank you, Senator Frank Uggins, for proposing to amend Section thirty-one thirteen of Chapter thirty-two five GCA. I can only speak for myself personally. I was, you know, even though this statute had been amended, our department, the Department of Law, the Office of the Attorney General had believed that, and we had submitted an Attorney General opinion in July twenty-six, twenty thirteen, the reference is AG thirteen dash zero five eight seven, that was submitted to the Honorable Speaker of this legislature during T one Pat, that essentially analyzed this bill, and we had determined that the unconditional prohibition on the outside practice of law by Department Attorneys contained in Chapter twelve, Section thirty-nine of Public Law thirty-one dash seventy-seven suffered from a number of defects which made it unenforceable, that it was enacted, number one, in violation of the Organic Act. And I believe Mr. Thompson alluded to that, and that's why he recommended that you perhaps enact, reenact the entire law in order to address that defect. And so because of that defect, we believe it's annulity, not a law. Again, being, that's the Attorney General's opinion, that this law also impaired constitutionally protected rights, three exceeded the territorial jurisdiction of the laws, to the extent that it may be applied to Assistant Attorney Generals who are licensed to practice law in other jurisdictions like myself, licensed to practice in three jurisdictions even before the Ninth Circuit, some of it before the U.S. Supreme Court. That would be an outside practice of law. We would be prohibited if you take this over to, if you interpret it broadly. That it also violates federal law, in our opinion, specifically USARA, and it prohibits attorneys from fulfilling their obligations or at least the aspiration to provide pro bono service. And I think that what, at least personally, the fact that Mr. Jonathan Kwan was being investigated ethically by the Ethics Prosecutor made clearly the AG opinion did not have no effect on that. And so perhaps we have to meet this head on and bring this to your attention. So we're glad that, because I don't, again, nobody believes that this was the intent for the law to restrict any member who serves in the government of Guam, whether he's an attorney or otherwise, serving actively or in the guard or in the reserve or even serving, I think that was, if I understand, part of the investigation, according to Mr. Kwan, the Ethics Bar thought that there was even a distinction as between guard versus a reserve. Well, I think serving the territory of your state is very American, very patriotic, and a good thing, not necessarily just only the country when you're being activated. Your governor has to activate the guard to help with natural disasters or things that are pertinent. So again, I don't think the intent was to bar any government of Guam attorney, much less those who work in the Attorney General's Office. I would like to submit for the record a proposed amendment to Senator Frank Uggins' amendment that, and I'll read it into the record and then I'll give you, I only have two copies. Apologize for that. But the amended language that I'm proposing, and again, if the purpose here is to make certain that attorneys focus on their work, and of course, we have the conflict rules that control and those procedures, it should apply to all government of Guam attorneys. So I would propose that the amendment read, you know, you keep the current language if you want to, neither the Attorney General nor any person employed in the Department of Law shall engage in any outside employment, which shall conflict with his duties or the Department of Law. I should have put the other minute. It should also include, it should simply just say, attorneys, neither Attorney General or any employee, any attorney employed as a classified or unclassified attorney shall engage in outside employment, which shall conflict with his duties within the department or any agency. An attorney's employed as classified or unclassified attorneys in the Department of Law or any attorney employed as a classified or unclassified attorney by any government of Guam agency, department, or instrumentality, including semi-autonomous or autonomous branches or branch of the government of Guam, shall not engage in the practice of law outside that department or agency or instrumentality or branch of government, unless the attorney is exempted from this restriction because the attorney is a member of the U.S. Military Armed Forces or U.S. Coast Guard, serving actively or serving in the reserves or state or territorial guard. Or, and that wouldn't require anybody's approval, that's simply an exemption by virtue of your membership in the guard or active duty or in the reserves. Or the attorney is exempted from this restriction unless the attorney is performing pro bono service or teaching or training that is approved by the Attorney General or by the head or director of the agency, department, instrumentality, or branch of the government of Guam. Again, we don't want this law to put a chill on pro bono service. Pro bono includes everything from helping out with certain agencies with, or rather, nonprofits. We've had the, why do I bring up teaching and training? Well, it's been raised in the civil service context. Some people don't want to count teaching law as the practice of law. Others say it is the practice of law, just like some say, teaching medical school, you must not be a doctor if you're teaching, or you must not be an educator because you're only teaching. Well, that, you know, we've had that argument. So I'm trying to cover all those circumstances that have actually occurred. We ran into a problem and we had some people who taught in law school, and when we were, when our HR was under department administration, they would not count as experience in law, teaching in law school or teaching law courses, which again, I think that that's why we wanted to address that. So I have this amendment, if you want to, if you be willing to consider it. I think that the three major areas that exemption should be required for is essentially the serving in the military, whether reserves, active duty, or guard, pro bono service, and teaching or training. Again, I think that that's, you would think that common sense would prevail and that would have been read into the law, but clearly that is not always the case. So I respectfully ask that you accept this amendment. I know I emailed it this morning to Senator Frank Uggins' office, and ask that you consider the amendment as proposed by Senator Frank Uggins, as well as the amendment we're proposing to expand, to meet those common sense exemptions or exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy. Senator Uggins, any additional comments or questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Speaker. Just a couple of questions in regards to your proposed amendment, Deputy Chief Attorney General. Obviously, we understand that the exception clause would be applicable to those who have served or who are serving in the U.S. Armed Forces. Now, the aspect in this, I'm looking at code, the code thirty-three zero one-one-three, and I'm under the understanding that in fact, that's a code that directly impacts and reflects the Office, the Department of Law, the Office of the Attorney General. Now, you're coming up with a proposal that could conceivably be viewed as carte blanche government, general governmental operations. Wouldn't it be more appropriate if that same concept was taken and put in a separate part of the code so that in fact, it applies, it's clear that this provision would be applicable to all, the entire government of Guam, rather than incorporating to the code that directly deals with the Department of Law? That's the first question. Second question is more or less, is performing pro bono? I could possibly, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of my colleagues, concede to performing pro bono for civic slash nonprofit organizations, but to make it a carte blanche provision may be a little bit of a concern because obviously this may be another way of trying to not circumvent, but legally provide services to an entity other than those that really need it on a pro bono basis, and that's the civic and nonprofit organizations and some other entities. So those are really more or less the two questions that I would like to pose. One is, is because we can take this isolated to the issue at hand and then take the general provision and try to reincorporate into another code into the government of Guam that would be applicable to the government agency. So please, you can just respond to this.
Well, okay. To answer your first question directly, yes, that clearly if you're going to have a broader, you're right, Section thirty-one thirteen is just within Chapter thirty of five GCA, which is the AG, which is the Attorney General chapter. I suppose you could put it in the four GCA outside employment section, which escapes me right now, the specific one. You could do that to make it broader, just that there are not very many chapters, there are not very many titles that, or chapters that address attorneys. And so, and by the way, the compiler of laws could also, under their own authority and power, move, I would have thought, at least if they thought it was broad and belonged into the government of Guam, four GCA, there is an outside employment, four GCA provision there. So to answer your first question, yes, that would probably be ideal. As to your second question about the pro bono service, the check, of course, is not only our ethics, our rules of professional responsibility and the conflict of interest rules, but also the pro bono would require the approval of the agency head or the Attorney General and the Department of Law. As it stands right now, the statute on its face is silent. So, you know, people are kind of free to interpret the silence as to what pro bono, whether pro bono service is restricted or not. But pro bono service is the outside practice of law. So I have that been asked by different nonprofits, you know, like, you know, Make-A-Wish, look at, if you look at this contract and so forth. And so, and of course, it doesn't conflict with my work, and it's, you know, it's, you know, with a hotel for the, you know, having at their gala. I mean, you know, that pro bono service, it would require you to get approval from your boss or your work. As it stands, there's none of that right now. So lawyers are free to make that decision on their own. So I would say that this is sort of a check on that. Or those who say, you know, actually, we had an attorney, I'll give you an example, who his mother had a small claims case and he wanted to help her, and he asked us, you know, what do you think about it? And we said, well, the statute is silent, look at our opinion that we issued, but we think pro bono service, if the Ethics Prosecutor took an overbroad view of it, would say that, you know, you're helping your mom in small claims, even though it's pro bono, she's not paying you. I would hope she's not paying you.
Your own mom.
Your own mom.
Your own mom, your wife.
Yeah, so that might be, we said that might very well be covered. And so, because he knew that, well, he never thought that anybody serving in the military would be investigated and possibly prosecuted because of the statute, decided he couldn't help his mother. So again, I think right now, the silence, he could have, what do you call it, decided to help his mother, and I think it would have been defensible. But if he had language that said, well, you know, it says I can do it if I get approval, that's, that would be, in my mind, a practical check for you, you know, especially if he asked, could I, you know, help my mom? So that's my best answer for you at this time.
Unfortunately, the silence would cause, again, this overbroad interpretation, and it's going to cause the attorney to have to go through hearings that he doesn't need to, we don't believe that he needs to. And this, of course, would take care of that. But attorneys, every time they make, almost every time they make a decision, they do a conflict check. And so they, it's automatic within them. So again, that's something that we alluded to. Regarding putting it... Regarding putting it in a different section, we could, we could leave it up to the compiler to put it where it should, where it probably fits, but the, one of the issues that we brought up in our, in our opinion was that it was inorganically amended, I mean, inorganically enacted. Now, to make, to amend the statute itself would be amending a, an inorganically enacted law within that budget bill that it was in. So it would be better, as proposed by one of our, one of the attorneys, is that to repeal it and reenact it on its own, so that it is a separate considered bill when in the past it wasn't. So that would be kind of a short answer at this point.
Okay, in regards to that, I'll work with the chairman, the speaker, and give him the thoughts to reenact it. And it goes back to this idea about the compiler laws would have to discretion, I would prefer to have it at least clear in whatever code it should be incorporated into. So in this particular case, the provision that applies directly to the Department of Law rightfully should be three zero one one three. The provision that perhaps would be carte blanche and applicable to all attorneys in the government of Guam should be appropriately placed in four GCA, whatever that code is. So I would like to review to the speaker and Speaker Pangilina in terms of how the committee would like to proceed with this. Just one closing comment, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman. There were a couple of testimonies that were submitted also by Mr. Kenya, Attorney Kenya, and then another one by General Folino. I just want to note for the record that there was an issued incorrect address, letter address on testimony to my office, and we, of course, said that that be correct, the Attorney General was able to correct them, and it's the second version that's directed to yourself as a chair, that really should be part of the record. So I just wanted to publicly make that statement because obviously, it was too disconcerting. But aside from that, thank you very much, gentlemen.
I just want to comment too, we have a national association of attorneys general organization that my office is a member of, and the director of that association is a retired admiral, and he is also in support of making sure that our assistant attorneys general and assistant attorneys general around the nation are able to serve in the different branches as a reserve member or guard member in whatever shape or form, honestly. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Rada, do you have any? Senator Dunias? Senator Rada? Senator Dunias? Um, can you just tell me what bill you think, what bill was, in your opinion, passed inorganically or is inorganic that this bill was on?
It was a section of a budget bill, I believe.
Public Law thirty-one dash seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven, section thirty-nine.
Have you moved to invalidate that law?
No, we first submitted an Attorney General opinion, we never had it. That was submitted in the summer of July twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen, to the speaker. Was it terminated to?
So, so you're saying that every single portion of that bill, Public Law thirty?
No, no, thirty-nine, no.
No?
That's not what the opinion is.
Only section?
No, 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 no.
Only that section.
Only section?
Under, yeah, under the germaneness rule or single subject rule.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it.
But everything else?
Besides the cases that talk about the inclusion of irrelevant provisions in a budget bill violates the single subject rule.
I got it.
So it was just that provision only, not the entire.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That being the conclusion of the presentation, we will declare Public Law, I mean, Bill two fifty-three then publicly heard. The next item on our agenda is Bill number two forty-nine. Bill number two forty-nine is a bill introduced by Senator Tonyada, enacted to reprogram the sum of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to the Department of Public Works for the paving of village streets and the repair of damages to village streets as a result of traffic diversion related to ongoing road construction projects. I have signed up to testify, Mr. Mayor Andrew Villagomez, Mr. Carl Dominguez, and Mayor Nunito Bloss. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your presence this morning. Before I begin receiving your testimony, I'd like to give the opportunity of the author to just give us a short synopsis of the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Bill two forty-nine thirty-two appropriates the funds to make basic repairs to the Roy T. Damian Street in Mungmung and Mamis Street in Manila. And as you know, most of us have traversed that road within the past year, and there's no question in my mind, I guess anyone's mind, that these roads are in serious need of repair. This measure was introduced in the last legislature, and since then, we've seen a lot of rainfall and a lot of erosion on the roadway. And although I'm uncertain that the problems of the roads can be completely remedied with the amount of funds that appropriated by this bill, I hope that at least it could be able to repair the severely damaged portions and prevent further damage to anyone's vehicles on that roadway. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rada. Mayor Villagomez?
Good morning, Chairman Ben Pangilina. My name is Andrew Villagomez, Mayor Mungmung Totomaiti. I want to thank the committee members that are present this morning for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of Bill number two four nine thirty-two COR, authorized by Senator Tonyada. Authorized by? This bill appropriates or reserves three hundred forty-five thousand dollars out of the three hundred seventy-five for the repair of Route thirty-three, also known as Roy T. Damian Street, located in Mungmung Totomaiti. Through the years, Route thirty-three was heavily traveled to bypass a major construction work between Hagatne and Baragata, causing the already riddled road to become more riddled with bigger and deeper potholes. Because of this road condition, safety has become a major concern between myself and the residents of MTM. I have witnessed vehicles falling into ditches trying to miss a pothole or two. Several residents have inquired about reimbursement of tires that were damaged by the potholes. During rainy season, potholes are camouflaged by water and no telling where or how deep they are till you get into it. Schoolchildren walking to and from home to the bus stop is also a safety factor. Roy T. Damian Street was paved approximately thirty years ago, and since then, no major repair maintenance has been performed. Through the years, the mayor's office have maintained the shoulder by cutting the grass that schoolchildren have some kind of walkway to get to the bus stop and filling out potholes with code mix, which is what we call a Band-Aid fix or a temporary fix to the problem. As senators know, the mayor's total annual budget does not warrant a mayor to fix roads, and that is the reason why I am here this morning to ask the body in front of me to please pass this appropriation bill, budget bill, number two four nine thirty-two COR, so that Roy T. Damian Street will not only be safe to travel on by the children and the people of MTM, but also to the entire island community of Guam that will travel through Roy T. Damian Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Dumas, and Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dominguez?
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee.
I'll read my testimony and then answer your questions, any questions you may have.
Dear Senator Pangilina, Department of Public Works, thanks you and the committee for the opportunity to submit testimony relative to the above referenced bill. In December twenty-ten, Public Law thirty-two dash seven was enacted and appropriated eight hundred thousand dollars to DPW to construct an access road to the Gil Baza subdivision in Gigal, and two hundred fifty thousand to repair Baragata Village Roads, which were heavily traveled and worn down as motorists looked for alternate roads to travel due to the Tri-Intersections project at the intersection of Routes eight, ten, and sixteen in Baragata. In the spring of twenty-twelve, the DPW Highway Maintenance and Construction Division began the in-house construction of the Gil Baza Access Road Project. This is a significant project for DPW, as this was the first time in over ten years that the DPW Highway Maintenance and Construction Division had the funding resources to construct a secondary road. All the road preparation work, except for the final paving with asphalt provided by Niebo Corporation, was undertaken by DPW HMC. The road project was completed and dedicated on July seventeenth, twenty-twelve. As a result of the dedicated efforts of this division of DPW, the Gil Baza Access Road Project was constructed significantly under budget in the amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand with a cost savings of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The DPW requests that Bill two four nine dash thirty-two be passed so that three hundred forty-five thousand of the three hundred seventy-five thousand balance be appropriated to address much-needed road repairs to Roy T. Damian Street, Mungmung Totomaiti. This road was heavily traveled during the recent reconstruction of East O'Brien Drive, also known as Route seven, from the Gani Shopping Center Route four to Route eight. Much like the Baragata Village Roads were traveled during the Tri-Intersection project, potholes, depressions, and poor friction surface when the road is wet all contribute to making Roy T. Damian Street hazardous to drive. Attaches a graphic, a color graphic, showing the locations of the subject road with the proposed repairs covered by this bill. The DPW also requests that thirty thousand of the three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar balance be used to add a second paved lane to a short section of Mamis Street in the village of Magila. A section of Mamis Street had an easement only wide enough for one lane of travel, and it was a paved lane. The DPW, in coordination with Mayor Nito Bloss, obtained additional easement from an adjacent property owner to add an additional travel lane and had GTA, GWA, and GPA relocate their utility lines to properly align Mamis Street on the newly widened public easement. However, this additional travel lane is unpaved and motorists are not inclined to use it. The asphalt paving of this additional travel lane will improve the safety and convenience to the many residents who use Mamis Street to access Route ten. A photo of Mamis Street is attached for review and we'll discuss it later. The DPW has very clearly demonstrated that with appropriate resources such as funding provided to the Gil Baza Access Road Project and repairs to the Baragata Village Roads, it is quite capable of not only constructing and repairing secondary roads within our villages, but doing so on time and below or within budget. DPW stands ready to address the repairs to Roy T. Damian Street and Mamis Street as soon as Bill two four nine thirty-two is passed and signed into law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. Mayor Bloss?
For the record, my name is Nito C. Bloss in Magila, mayor, and I thank you, the chairman and all the senators that are here, and I'm asking for your support in approving the appropriation of thirty thousand dollars to upgrade the long-awaited projects in Mamis Street. You know, we've been working on that with the DPW's staff and directors, and it's been needed. There's a lot of accidents going on in there, and when ambulance or fire departments are going in there for, to rescue or for response in there, it's found that it's very difficult to go in there because it's only a one-way. Often times, they have to go to GCC or BPM Road to Wan Munya, and so, you know, I've been working, we had with the DPW to upgrade the road, you know, so I ask for your support in providing the allotted thirty thousand dollars, and possibly more, to make that thing happen for the convenience of the people that live around Mamis Street. And thank you for your support, and hope you give us that appropriations as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if you recall, we had it included Mamis Street in another project, and unfortunately, for whatever reason, it was not funded in that project.
Yes, we've been working on that for, remember, this is our second meeting?
Right, this is the, this is the second.
For Mamis Street.
That's correct.
So, you know, we have my, we've been working on that for the longest time.
Right, it was, so it was authorized to be repaired under a part of another list of projects, and unfortunately, it was not prioritized at that time. And so, we hope with this bill, that it will get the priority attention that it deserves. Thank you very much. Senator Rada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to thank Mayor Villagomez, Mayor Bloss, and Director Dominguez for coming out to testify. Hopefully, we'll be able to work with the committee and the chairman to see if we'll be able to get this bill out onto the next session agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Senator Yamashita, did you have any? Okay, Senator Dunias? Senator Rada?
I just want to ask, I hope your members of the Mamis Street here and then, we'd like to, maybe just, you know, support.
Yes, we'll note that.
Just a quick question, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman, Monigagi Talan Mamis. I know it connects to Route ten, though, Monigagi, Mononogotstesa. Just yesterday, I drove by some of the internal roads, and obviously, there are other areas within Manila that certainly need some additional attention, but where is Mamis Street?
Mamis Street? Mamis Street is coming from the church, and the first one is Arbin Road, Arbin, then Mamis, Mamis into sections, the second road from the church.
With the group opens.
And they open, you know, they build the Titanic apartment, right there, and then, and that what caused that, that?
Okay, so that's where the congestion appears occasionally?
Just by Route ten, about maybe about less than fifty feet in, is the Titanic and the road.
I know, thank you very much, gentlemen, for your testimony this morning, but just a quick question, in light of the chairman being here. Mr. Dominguez, are there any other additional funding sources that can be utilized? Because I know that the mayors have been approaching the chairman and individual senators in terms of getting some additional roads repaired. Repaired, not necessarily reconstructed or expanded, but just repaired. Are there any other additional funding sources? I just feel like I need to ask this question because obviously, there's going to be a lot of other projects that are going to be highlighted. I mean, just today, a notification was given out to the public that if you have a pothole, please bring it to attention of certain individuals, and I think that's great, that in fact, some of these are going to be addressed. But are there any other funding sources that can be utilized so that the chairman can work towards redirecting those to other realizable projects?
Outside of our federal dollars for the routed roads, since I've been at DPW, for major road repairs, we've relied on the legislature to appropriate funding. This three hundred seventy-five thousand, by the way, is highway bond money, leftover highway bond money and restricted to, you know, road construction. Our very tight operating budget at DPW is typically for your, I call them, normal maintenance, filling, filling small potholes and, and, you know, cutting grass along the roads, and I want to thank the mayors again because they help us out a lot on that, and then for striping roads and for striping roads and that sort of thing, but nothing for what I call the major road repair. But since I have your attention, I wanted to?
Right, just ask Senator Rada if he had any question. Senator Rada, first.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor from Magila, this area that Mamis Street connects out to Route ten, is that area in there landlocked? Now, you mentioned that there's a street that they can exit going to GCC or going out through another area, but I think that is not, is that, are those public easements?
It is, it is, they, the department when they, when they built that Titanic apartment there, they thought that it was not easement.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about you have the residents, you have Mamis Street that comes off of Route ten, and it goes into a residential area there. Now, prior to Mamis Street actually being constructed, I think, were the residents in there able to enter and exit through, you said GCC or whatever?
They entered to Wan Munya, they can exit, or they enter from Mamis, and then they exit to either Wan Munya or Dong Street. Wan Munya, they exit to Wan Munya into BPM Road, better known as BPM Road, or you can go straight to Dong and then exit to West Rojas, East Rojas.
Okay, my question primarily is, it was my understanding, because my office was actually working with one of the constituents who was advocating to get that Mamis Street connected, that that area inside, the residential area, is basically landlocked. I mean, although there are other roads that they may enter and exit from, it was really not a designated public area.
No, one time they saw, I think, problem there, the Wan Munya, somebody claimed that to be, it's not actually an easement there, this may be about five, ten years ago. There's somebody there that attempted to close that road, the Wan Munya Road. So, Mrs. Cherry Ruhan wants that. So, Mrs. Jerry Wuhan wants that.
So, and so then, has that been resolved? That is now a public easement?
Yes, yeah, no.
Okay, and is that a paved easement?
Paved, it's a paved easement.
But of course, they have to kind of go into a circuitous way to get out to Route Ten, correct?
Of course.
All right.
You can go now from Route Ten to Mamis Road, then turn right on Wan Munya, then down to BPM, down to Route Ten again, or to GCC. No, down to Route Fifteen, down to, to Route Street.
Now, is the urgency also of Mamis Street pretty much, I guess, highlighted by the fact that cars that are on the northbound lane coming from GCC, if they are to turn off of Route Ten to turn into Mamis Street, there is really no, not enough space for that, for those cars to turn in such that then the queue is going to be right on Route Ten, correct?
No, Senator, that's fine. If you look at the photograph attached to the, the problem is that stretch that you see in the photograph. Yeah, right by the apartments. That's the problem. So, there's a tendency for drivers to avoid the non-paved portion. It's only ten feet wide and so you, there's the potential of a head-on collision because that's just the natural tendency of the drivers is to drive on that single paved lane there. And so, that's the purpose of asking for the funding is to put in a second ten-foot-wide lane there and create two lanes of travel.
Okay, so possibly then, one could argue that the urgency here is that unless we widen that road, it really kind of presents a hazard on Route Ten because cars are not gonna, they're gonna wait till that paved area is clear before they turn in or whatever.
I don't, I have not personally witnessed a backing up of traffic there on the outer lane on Route Ten. My concern with the mayor has always been a collision on this stretch in the photograph there. So.
And I certainly don't want to undermine the importance of the Roy Damian Street. Because in fact, I think K-57 was talking this morning about the same thing that you described, potholes that were so deep that, you know, on a rainy day, when it's filled with water, you don't know that it's a pothole until you're in it. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Senator Ruggen mentioned that there's now a pothole crew at DPW under direction of the governor's office? Is that true?
No, the governor has just wants DPW to do a quicker job of filling up potholes.
Oh, but they have to call the governor's office to tell you their words out and then they'll call you?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, they can call us or the mayor's office.
Okay.
May I ask something of you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My strategy was to, if this becomes law, was to tackle Mama Street first.
Okay.
Okay. We estimated thirty thousand dollars as kind of a worst case.
Right.
Personally, I think we can do it for less than that. So, I wanted to ask you if the verbiage in the bill could be amended so that if there's any leftover, let's say I could, we could get it paid for in fact.
How about you start them both at the same time? I mean, it can't be that hard. It can't be that hard. Just start them both at the same time.
I can start both at the same time, but if in fact, we can do Mama Street for less than
I don't think it restricts you because the language doesn't say fix Roy T. Damian, then do Mamis. I just think it just says, and it's See what I'm trying to avoid? We're gonna do it at the same time. We're gonna start at the same time.
We can start at the same time.
One will get finished first because it's so much shorter, but we'll start them at the same time. Yes, yes, yes.
And that was the reason.
Yes, I understand, but I don't think the bill restricts you to doing one before the other.
Also, Mr. Chairman.
Oh. Oh, yeah, that's fine. But if you start them at the same time, you won't spend your three forty-five before exhausting the thirty. I mean, just
Mr. Chairman, also, I think the mayor in this Mama Street repair, there's one or two side roads, and I've actually witnessed this. The one side road that I can think of connecting with Roy T. Damian Street, there's a street called Pepperoo Street. This street services a number of homes and it's quite steep. It's quite a steep road and it is paved, but it's got to be forty years old. And I've actually walked this road and it's been polished over the years. And so, the one resident asked me, and this was at least a year ago, if we could redo the road. And so, I walked the road and I looked at it carefully and it is polished. So, the complaint was on a rainy day, as they're trying to climb the hill.
So, you like to put some anti-skate?
I like to put some anti-skate. Does this bill restrict me from not doing it?
If it's not on there, perhaps, but we could put it in pretty easily.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you very much. Well, I think that incorporates, his question incorporates that into the desire of DPW. Yes, no, these are bond monies. Okay. Thank you very much. Same time. Thank you and Sis Massey. There being no other business before the committee this morning, we'd like, oh, did you want to testify, George? Please, come forward. Yes. Anybody else that may, yes, please, come forward. Once again, please identify yourself for the record. Press the button, make sure that the red light's on, and you may proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is George Pareda and I'm a resident from Mogiila and I live right off of Mamis Street.
Mamis, not Mamis?
We've always said Mamis.
Yeah, okay.
Sweet, yes.
Just want to make sure we get the right street.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Senators. We, the residents of Mamis Street really appreciate the time of taking this action at this time. We've, as the mayor said, we had been hoping that this job would have been done four or five or even six years ago. And I believe that the problem here began with our road being a bull cart trail. And then when the pavement was laid, it wasn't laid exactly where the bull cart trail was. And that's what caused the problem there. And so, just exactly where the bull cart trail is and where the pavement lies can be or has been a problem or was the problem that brought about the closure of that road. And when Senator Tom Ada had entertained the concern about four years ago, one of the things I had mentioned at that time was that I thought that because of the fact that there wasn't clearly identified as to where that bull cart trail was or where the pavement should lie, that it was important for us to be able to identify that before further pavement is being laid and then someone else comes along. Because I believe that the titanium apartments, when it was built, identified the bull cart trail on their application for their building. And then after the building was put up, then at that time, they said there didn't exist a bull cart trail and then closed that road there. And so, one of our concerns is to make sure that this problem is resolved by correctly identifying where the pavement should lie so that in the future, they don't have a problem with closing the road. Because someone else along the way may, upon purchase of the property or whatever, decide that they're going to close it because they don't view that there is a proper access there. The other concern, if I may, would be, as the mayor said, we truly need, as residents in that area, we truly need a good access road because we do have elderly that would possibly need ambulance services. And if that could be done, then of course, that would ease the minds of those residents in that area. And I don't know if this is appropriate also, but Mamis Street connects with Route Ten and goes pretty far in addition to the opening there along Route Ten. And if possible, because of the fact that there are a couple of turns in there, dangerous turns, I think, I think that it would be appropriate for us to have proper lighting in that road as well. Right now, there exists street lights at the end of the road and then further up beyond the intersection of Mamis Street and Wan Munya Street. But along that stretch there, there aren't any lights at all. And so, if a couple of street lights could be put there, I think they would make that road a lot safer. We do have children that walk on that road very early in the morning and it could be very dangerous to them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pareda. Sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Senators. My name is Jeff Guerrero. I'm a resident of Mamis Street, Mogiila. The area where the proposed work is being planned, I speak in opposition because a portion of my mom's sister's property, utilities were arbitrarily moved on to our property without proper notification. My concern is if they exist, plan to extend it up further. It will also affect my sister's property and mine as well. We want to know the specific details as to how far this road widening intends to go. I mean, my uncle sits with me right here today and we were never notified that the utilities were going to be moved. And of course, it's a concern. The bull cart trail was there when I was a child in nineteen sixty. And in my opinion, the problem all started when they constructed the titanium complex there. As far back as I can remember, even before the mayor lived in Guam, when he came back from the military, there was an old fence and it's right where the existing pavement exists today. So, if there was an offset, I don't remember it. I remember the Berdaliu family in the front, the Cayanas that owned the plant nursery next to them, and my family's property right behind there. So, I don't know where, what happened or how a permit was even ever issued for construction of that building, but that's not what I remember. And like I said, our biggest concern is that they're going to keep condemning more of our property.
Is the director still here? Can you see if he's still here?
I mean, we understand that, you know, there's a need for improvement. However, as the landowners, please give us the opportunity to come in and challenge this. I mean, I just asked my uncle, I said, "Uncle, did they ever notify you?" Guess what? One Saturday morning, GPA's there arguing on our property, moving poles. And you know, I said to myself, "It's a good thing it's today." Because back then, if this was during my grandfather's time, we're going to shoot somebody. You ask permission before you come onto our property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guerrero. Did you, same concern, Mr. Guerrero? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. We certainly, yes, Senator Ruggen, did you have a question?
Mr. Speaker, just a quick question because I know that the director mentioned that he had coordinated efforts with the mayor in terms of acquiring the additional easement, public easement property. So, I think that
Can you, can you?
Please.
The building permit and it was questioned, I've been fighting for that even before the building started, I think. And I have all the way to the Attorney General and with the help of the Senator Tom Ada, that thing that clarified that. Because he was, Mr. Franklin Tyte, no, at one time attempted to close the whole road. The whole road in the thing and then, you know, so I had to argue.
Can we request, if you have any documentation, Mayor, in regards to
I have a document, I have a resident there, Mr. Talik has been helping me with that. We've been going through a lot of work in rectifying that because they were given a building permit to build that apartment there. And then the Titanel family, she Jane, sorry that she died, but she attempted to close the whole road. And I argued the fact and we went through the land management, all the way to the Attorney General and then
I understand, Mayor, I think that in this case, you know, I would hate to see, granted, we understand that the upgrade needs to be provided and access so that the ambulance can enter and provide services to our people. But I'd like to see this issue resolved in documentation format and I'm sure the chairman, who's also the chair of land, Speaker Panglin, and I'm hoping that in concert with the Department of Public Works that we'll be able to get and Department of Land Management we can get the public documentation because that's where you need to assure us that this is actually public easement. Now, if your contention is still that it's private property, then we really should not be at this time allocating resources unless we compensate the private landowners for the use of their property. So, that's an issue that certainly we need documentation. And no, Mr. Mayor, it's just, I think this is really more or less DPW now and land management so that we can get a certification that in fact is public property so that we can proceed with the project. So, I'll just leave it with that and hopefully, the documents will come forward. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
So, that will not delay the authorized section of the road to be repaired.
If the document reflects that it's all public easement, they will not delay it. It will not delay it. So, that's where we need that official documentation from the Department of Land Management working with DPW to ensure that we don't venture into private property and then come back later and try to fix it. I mean, there's one family member that the good speaker was able to provide direct negotiated support for after thirty-four years. This family came back and said, "The government came in and intruded in my property and used my property for public use. We want compensation." And thirty-five years it took that family to go to the Attorney General's office and to work with Speaker Panglin's office to actually get that resolved. And I would hate to see something like this happen because there are a lot of other situations. So, we just want that certification that it's public easement property.
Well, I knew about that problem. I knew that, but in the meantime, for the access, we were working for access, whatever, thing to, because we had it verified. And the one that we send in only sixteen feet is the bull cart trail. I'm not sure about the farther in. But the sixteen feet that we need to make it that two lengths. That's all I'm thinking. Well, I know that there's a problem with the private property in this and, but, you know, land management and somebody else is handling that.
Yeah, I don't think you're having any concern about the appropriation and getting the access, providing the access, it's just getting the certification. And I'm sure that the speaker, the chairman of the committee and as well as Senator Tony Ada would be moving in that direction in terms of trying to get that. Because we don't want to stop to slow down the project, but we also want to make sure that any private property is not
I'm on way with that. He's just not ready to prepare that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a copy of the area. One area is my property.
And that's the one they're going to pave? Is that? Oh, they move the utilities on to your property? Okay. And that's a GPA and GWA both or?
The GPA posts.
Just the GPA posts?
The water line and the telephone lines do exist in their existing areas.
Okay, okay. So, it's the GPA utilities that we're concerned about? Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much once again, ladies and gentlemen, Sis Massey for your presence and your presentations this morning. There being no additional business before the committee, we will now adjourn this hearing.